Need a motion to approve agenda with the addition of a close session number one per general statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, A, three. For the purpose to consult with the county attorney in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege. Do you have a motion?
Somebody turn five.
Have a motion in the discussion. If none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Item number one on the agenda is proclamation recognizing April as child abuse prevention month, Mr. Carlton Paylor.
Good evening.
Good evening, sir.
Thank you for this opportunity. As I can read, the proclamation of child abuse prevention month in April twenty twenty-four. It states whereas children are a state's most vulnerable members and most valuable resources helping to shape the future of North Carolina. And whereas positive childhood experiences like loving caregivers and safe, stable, and nurturing relationships can help mitigate trauma and the negative impact of adverse childhood experiences to promote social, emotional, and developmental well-being of children. And whereas childhood trauma can have long-term psychological, emotional, and physical effects throughout an individual's lifetime and impact future generations of their family. And is a serious problem affecting every community and finding solutions requires input and action from everyone. And whereas children who live in families with access to concrete economic and social supports are less likely to experience abuse and neglect. And whereas preventing child maltreatment is possible because of the partnerships created between families, advocates, child welfare professionals, education, health community, and faith-based organizations, businesses, law enforcement agencies, and local, state, and national governments. And whereas we acknowledge that in order to solve the public health issue of abuse and neglect, we must work together to change hearts and mindsets through storytelling, sharing, center needs of families, break down biases and barriers, and inspire in action, form partners. And whereas we are committed to advancing equitable, responsive, and effective systems to ensure all children and families are healthy and thriving. And whereas we recognize the need to prioritize kids and invest into more prevention initiatives like home visiting and family strengthening policies, economic supports, and community-based child abuse prevention programs at the national, state, and local levels. And.
Hmm, yeah, okay. Now, therefore, in recognition of child abuse prevention, the Person County Board of Commissioners do hereby proclaim April as Child Abuse Prevention Month and call upon all citizens, community agencies, faith groups, medical facilities, elected leaders, and businesses to increase their participation in our efforts to support families thereby preventing child abuse and strengthening the communities in which we live. Adopted this the first day of April twenty twenty-four, signed by Gordon Powell, Chair. And if our clerk needs to sign or pass it along to you, sir, thank you for coming and doing that. Do we have a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing April seven through thirteen as national, oh, sorry, wrong one. April as Child Abuse Prevention Month. Want to add, have a motion to approve as presented, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Thank you, sir.
Thank you all so much, we appreciate your support.
Thank you. Okay, then item number two, proclaiming proclamation recognizing National Library Week, Ms. Kaylee Rayner.
Good evening.
Good evening.
The proclamation of April seventh, thirteen, as Library Week in Person County. Whereas since nineteen fifty-eight, National Library Week from April seventh through thirteen celebrates the contributions of libraries across the United States. And whereas in connection with the North Carolina State Library, acknowledge how libraries and librarians go beyond their traditional roles and provide opportunities for education, empowerment, and community engagement. And whereas librarians and volunteers build literacy skills and bridge the digital divide by providing people of all backgrounds with engaging programs and events to attend, a wide range of materials to borrow, and access to technology to help them succeed in an increasingly digital and connected world. And whereas all Personians are encouraged to visit Person County Public Library to utilize the free services available to them and learn more about how the library can help them achieve their goals through information, inspire creativity through programs, and imagine an infinite of possibilities, one book, audiobook, song, or movie at a time.
Now, therefore, in recognition of National Library Week, the Person County Board of Commissioners designates April seventh through April thirteenth, twenty twenty-four, as Library Week in Person County, and encourages all citizens to visit and use the Person County Library to become more informed, inspired, and imagine infinite possibilities. Adopted this first day of April twenty twenty-four, signed Gordon Powell and attested by Michelle Sotman. Thank you. Do we have a motion to approve the proclamation recognizing?
Motion to accept and approve.
Motion on the floor, any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for the fine job you do.
Thank you so much.
Item number three on the agenda is public hearing. Or a roadway, roadway naming. Do we have a motion to open the public hearing?
So move.
Motion to open the public hearing. Any discussion? You're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Okay, Ms. Ballin.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
I come before you tonight with a request to add High Slope Trail, a private roadway name, to our list of E nine-one-one roadway names within the county. This is actually just down the road from the one we did a month ago. The developer slash owner of five parcels of land along an existing subdivision has decided to develop that property. This right-of-way will serve at least three homes, possibly as many as five. Therefore, we are required to name that road based on the ordinance regulating addresses and road naming in Person County. As required by statute, a public hearing is being held right now. Public notice was made in the newspaper and a sign was placed in the location of the road to be named. A high-slope trail was chosen by the developer who owned all five of the lots at the time we asked for that input. The road name is compliant with all naming regulations in the ordinance, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Commissioner questions? Okay, if none, then, Madam Clerk, do we have public comments in favor of or in opposition of the motion?
No, sir, we do not.
If you're none, then do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close the public hearing, any discussion? You're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Okay, Ms. Ballin.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Evening.
I come before you tonight with a request to add High Slope Trail, a private roadway name, to our list of E nine-one-one roadway names within the county. This is actually just down the road from the one we did a month ago. The developer slash owner of five parcels of land along an existing subdivision has decided to develop that property. This right-of-way will serve at least three homes, possibly as many as five. Therefore, we are required to name that road based on the ordinance regulating addresses and road naming in Person County. As required by statute, a public hearing is being held right now. Public notice was made in the newspaper and a sign was placed in the location of the road to be named. A high-slope trail was chosen by the developer who owned all five of the lots at the time we asked for that input. The road name is compliant with all naming regulations in the ordinance, and I'm happy to take any questions at this time.
Commissioner questions? Okay, if none, then, Madam Clerk, do we have public comments in favor of or in opposition of the motion?
No, sir, we do not.
If you're none, then do we have a motion to close the public hearing? Motion to close the public hearing, any discussion? You're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Okay, item number four on the agenda would be to consideration of granting or denying the approval of the private driveway. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve with the recommended conditions included.
We have a motion on the floor for approval, any discussion? Here none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number five is public hearing quasi-judicial, SUP oh-two-two-four. Motion to open the hearing at this time.
So move.
Motion to open the hearing, any discussion? You're none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, non-motion carried. And, Madam Clerk, would you administer the swearing-in?
Yes, sir, Mr. Bowley, as well as the three gentlemen on the front row, Mr. Holt, Mr. Wingard, and Mr. Berkowitz. If you'll please place your left hand on the Bible and raise your right. Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth, so help you God?
I do.
Thank you.
Thank you, okay, now a presentation by Mr. Bowley.
Good evening, Chairman and Commissioners, Chris Bowley, Planning Department. Okay, this is SUP zero-two-twenty-four, Loston Chapel Church Road Tower. And, sorry, I'm a little truncated here, let me get my notes. Subject property is eighteen point six-three acres. It's located at twenty ninety-four Loston Chapel Church Road with tax map number A eighty-one-eleven and parcel ID number zero-nine-four-eight-oh-three-ten-eight-two-oh-six-point-zero-zero-zero. It's located at the southeast corner of Loston Chapel Church Road and St. Paul Church Road, has a rural future land use designation and an RC zoning designation. The proposed telephone transmitting tower use needs special use permit approval in an RC zoning district. The applicant followed the planning ordinance criteria for SUP application and site plan approval. The proposed use is consistent with the comprehensive plan and county ordinances. Here is the aerial photo showing the proposed property and location. The tower will be roughly right where the little pointer is, at the end of the open field next to the forest. This is the future land use map showing rural for the subject property and all surrounding properties. And the same thing with the zoning map, RC, consistent entitlements. This is the site plan, this is the planned view showing the tower straight down as a guy-wired tower, three hundred and five feet with a four-foot-tall lightning rod, for a total of three hundred and nine feet. This is the profile view showing the tower. And the applicant has a presentation that they're going to show you after this, a little more detail. This is the findings of fact that are in our ordinance, that the use will not materially endanger the public health or safety of located or proposed and developed according to the plan as submitted and approved. And that's the applicant's response to decide. That the use meets all required conditions and specifications, the applicant provided that, that it would meet that. That the use will not substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property, or that the use is a public necessity. That the location and character of the use is developed according to the plan as submitted and approved will be in harmony with the area in which it would be located and in general perform with the comprehensive plan, which it will be. So based on the four findings of fact and the staff report provided in your application and the information provided from the applicant, staff recommends the following conditions of approval and approval of SUP zero-two-twenty-four, that the applicant continues to obtain all required permits from Person County, State of North Carolina, and any other agency to achieve construction operations and maintenance of the subject property. Advocate or tenant records the thirty-foot-wide access easement from Loston Chapel Church Road and the three twenty-foot-wide guy-wire easements prior to construction. The existing mature vegetation outside of the tower lease area remains, but it provides buffering and screening from adjacent land uses. The applicant or tenant shall provide continual property maintenance that does not impact adjacent properties, to include maintenance of the perimeter security fence, fire safety access, and any directional downward security lighting. The potential motion we always provide, which mirrors that which we just read for staff recommendation, if you so choose to follow it. And if you have any questions, I'm here to answer it, otherwise I'll turn it over to the applicant.
Questions?
I read the agenda again this afternoon, and it mentioned something about Roanoke River flood zone or Roanoke watershed.
It's in the Roanoke watershed, yes, sir.
So there's no conflict with this?
Yes, sir, there's no conflict with this, so they wouldn't have to do advanced stormwater applications for threshold impacts.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions? All right.
I'm going to turn it over to, I'm sorry, Ralph, your last name?
Yeah, Ralph Weingarten. Okay. Yeah. Thank you, Mr. Bowley. All right. Thank you, Ms. Bowley and Mr. Chair, members of the commission. My name is Ralph Weingarten, Falcon Foster, six seventy-eight Front Avenue Northwest, Suite two fifty-five in Grand Rapids, Michigan. Here on behalf of the applicant, the towers LLC, which is a subsidiary of Vertical Bridge. And they construct infrastructure for wireless facilities around the nation, and in this case, it will be Verizon Wireless, that's the initial occupant at the top of the tower. And then there's designed space for at least three future providers on the tower as well, so AT&amp;T, T-Mobile, Dish Network. This will help them as well. Just briefly touching on the need, the site colors show signal strength on the map, green is in building, yellow is in vehicle, orange is on the street, and then the other lighter colors are no service. This site will fill a major gap between Roxborough and another site we have over near Highway ninety-six in Granville County. The location itself will serve users on Highway forty-nine, Dirgy Mine Road, the other country roads around. It'll also provide service to Mayo Lake and Mayo Lake Park area. This did, we did search around to see what other towers were in the area. FCC has an antenna structure registration database, and our search showed that there were no hits within approximately a little over three miles, five kilometers. So this is a location that will help not only Verizon, but the others, just because there's no other infrastructure in the area. We do anticipate these other providers will come as well and stay competitive with Verizon. Again, this shows the co-location design, Verizon's at the top, and we show three spaces below them for future providers. And then also on the ground, there are corresponding spaces within the compound for each provider in the future. The FAA has studied this project and determined that there's no hazard to air navigation. We also provided an engineer letter as part of the packet where they certified a hundred and fifty-five-foot engineered fall zone. That fall zone stays within the confines of the property. It's unlikely that the tower would fail, but if it were to have an event where it exceeded like the cold winds and ice loading and so forth, the tower's designed with a weaker breakpoint about a hundred and fifty-five feet below the top of the tower, and so it would fold over on itself. Or in the event that it would become detached, it would be within that hundred and fifty-five-foot fall zone. We show here an aerial view. Again, that dashed circle is the fall zone, which is well within the property boundaries. In terms of visibility, while it is at the end of an open field, there are mature trees, probably sixty, seventy feet around the field. And I went and drove by and checked the views from neighboring homes, and they all have tall, mature trees that would obscure the view from their vantage points as well. We had an impact study done and submitted as part of the application from certified appraiser Michael Berkowitz, who is here tonight. He can answer any questions about it, but his opinion is stated there that it would not substantially detract from aesthetics or character of the neighborhood and that it wouldn't substantially injure the value of adjoining or abutting property. And the findings of fact, Mr. Bowley went over, but essentially, we've designed the site to meet the requirements of your ordinance. It meets the planning for service to rural areas, for broadband internet access, for enhancing public health and safety in terms of the emergency services and fire. It'll be in a good location to fill that gap in coverage that we showed on the need map with minimal impact as shown by the study. I do have with me tonight Jeremy Holt, who did the site acquisition for the site and can answer questions about that. He also has a land, a letter from the landowner. She had flight trouble and was going to be here to testify but couldn't make it and sent him a letter instead if he could potentially read that into the record. If he could potentially read that into the record. And then we also have Certified Appraiser Michael Berkowitz here, who can answer any questions regarding his impact study, regarding property value impact and so forth. And with that, I'll just leave it and thank you for your time. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have. And I'll open it up to, to Jeremy.
I don't have any questions, but I would say that it is well needed. That area is the worst area in this whole county. And thank you for coming forward with this project.
Absolutely.
Sorry. You're next?
Do you want to hear the letter from the landowner?
Yes, I think it'd be appropriate.
Thank you for your time. Mrs. Sylvia is, sorry, she couldn't be here. She, her plane got delayed. She doesn't quite live in the county, but she lives in Greensboro area now. So she wanted to be able to be here to speak and she's sorry. She says, I regret, I'm unable to attend this meeting. I'm asking these historical facts be stated prior to the board's decision. I Sylvia Crutchfield Swayze am a third-generation landowner in Roxborough. As a child, I spent my summers on, on my grandparents' tobacco farm, Route Two, Box Eighty, no zip code. Then later named Lawson Chapel Church Road two seven five seven four. As a property owner, I wanted to be a good neighbor. Although I reside in Greensboro, I have always wanted this property to somehow benefit the greater community at large. About a year ago, we were approached by cell, cellular representative and ultimately our land was selected for, as a potential site. This site will provide cellular connectivity in the area that is, has poor to no cell service. This agreement provides cell service for residents and visitors to Roxborough and the greater Person County. And then she says, to whom much is given, much is appreciated. Humbly submitted.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
He, he said it all, huh?
If he has questions about it, if he has any questions, we're happy to answer them.
Commissioner, questions? Anyone? All right, if there are no questions, Madam Clerk, do we have comments in favor of or opposed?
No, sir.
We have none? So having none, do we have a motion to close the hearing?
So move.
Have a motion to close the hearing and further discussion or comments. Here are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item number six would be consideration to grant or deny the request. Do we have a motion to approve SUP oh two twenty-four for a telephone transmitting tower?
Motion to approve.
Motion to approve the request.
Is there with conditions?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you, Attorney. With the conditions stated, all in, any, any other discussion or comments? Here are none. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? None. Motion carried. Okay, at this time in the commissioner meetings, we do have a public comment period set aside, ten minutes to hear from the public. Madam Clerk, do we have speakers signed up?
Yes, sir, we do. We have seven individuals.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank. We have seven. We'll, we'll do two minutes if you let IT know that.
Yes, sir. So if IT could set the clock for two minutes, our first speaker is Alan Booker of Rougemont.
Good evening, commissioners.
Evening.
My name is Alan Booker and I live in Rougemont. Actually, I had this printed out by a friend. I don't have a printer at home. I typed it up, but I couldn't print it. And I showed it to my friend. He printed it for me and said, did you read it? He said, yeah. You're beating a dead horse. I profoundly hope that that's not the case. We are still extremely disturbed regarding the lack of communication and complete disregard and inability to demonstrate even a modicum of respect for those you are supposed to be representing. Although you appear to have moved on from the Dominion Gas Project, be reminded that there are growing numbers of persons in Person County residents who have not. Still waters run deep. A healthy community life rests upon honest communication. Once seeds of discontent have been sown and take root, your ability to manage the resulting crop will be greatly diminished. As individual commissioners, you might find grounds to justify your actions, but the forces of community life will always find a path to the light and in most unexpected ways. When more than three hundred plus Person County residents shared their hearts and souls with you on December the fourth, we were completely ignored. That is a perfect recipe for a breakdown of the relationship between the commissioners and your community. Your short-sighted inability to take but a few minutes to acknowledge the outpouring or postpone, postpone the decision to respect the concerns from your constituents demonstrated that your working process, in this instance that I'm referring to, was dead on arrival. Your miscalculations regarding this issue cannot bear healthy fruit. Only mistrust and a lack of respect. I thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, sir.
Next speaker we have is Rhonda Courier of Timberlake.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I'm Rhonda Courier, as she said. I would like to begin by saying that your decision on December fourth, twenty twenty-three, to approve the rezoning of four hundred and eighty-five acres from rural conservation to heavy industrial, in turn allowing Dominion Energy to build Mariah Energy Center, has been and continues to be a nightmare for residents of this community. To add insult to injury, at the January second, twenty twenty-four meeting, we were accused of not being Person County residents, but people who were paid to be there. I was there and I can assure you, we were Person County residents who were not paid to be there. We care about our community without being monetarily compensated. It was also said that the meeting was not civil. It was very civil, until you all delivered a gut punch by voting unanimously to pass the rezoning proposal without even a semblance of concern for the residents or the environment. We are intelligent people who knew we were being betrayed by the people who were elected to protect us and we had the right to voice our displeasure with your decision. It was amazing the lack of empathy shown to your fellow Personians. Then on March eighteenth, twenty twenty-four meeting, you all asked questions regarding the environmental impact of a mere twenty-five point six acre salvage operation being proposed for Person County, voicing concern that oil could leak into the groundwater and surrounding waterways. Please hearken back to your vote on December fourth, twenty twenty-three, to rezone land from rural conservation to heavy industrial, where you asked no questions and showed no concern for four hundred and eighty-five acres that will be an environmental disaster if you allow liquefied natural gas monstrosity to be built there. Let's take a moment to rationalize that. You will have, you have power still in this matter. Please defuse this ticking time bomb. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Liz Bratcher of Samora.
First, thank you all for pursuing the DSS efforts. We really appreciate it. From Philip Allen to Sherri Wilburn, we hear the Woodsdale issue known as Project Log will be good for the county. I hope this is the case. However, the process demonstrates a lack of vetting on the project, the developer, Mason Day and his partner consultant Sherri Wilburn. I believe the PC BIC board and the BOC did not understand the scale and scope of this project because if you all did, we would not, I would not be here today. Engineers employed by Southern, Norfolk Southern Rail stated the site is not optimal for a rail lay-down yard. Due to the topography of the land, cost estimates are between twelve and fourteen million dollars, which does suggest a private partner. Vast amounts of dirt and gravel are needed to raise the elevation of the site to over forty-five feet. A private contractor will be needed to lay down the rail. A trestle bridge will be constructed and the environment will be changed. All this without a public hearing or public input. Ms. Wilburn's timeline of business decisions to include the development of her LLC, her county resignation, her purchase of a warehouse used by Day and Day's North Carolina LLC registration suggests she used insider knowledge to gain personal benefit from this project. This has been a plan for some time. According to the conveyance signed in September of twenty twenty-three, the PC BIC conveyed thirty-five acres at a price of a thousand dollars an acre. Fair market value for that acre, for each acre is five to seven thousand dollars. That means a loss of a hundred and forty thousand dollars for the Person County BIC. We know the PC BIC lost proceeds from the timber on the site. Plans were not submitted to the county, state environmental and DOT concerns took place. A non-compliance letter from the county was sent to Day, Wilburn and Allen in February. And Day has claimed the lay-down patio is for fly ash. Ms. Wilburn denied this. Ash is needed by certainty for the construction of building materials and we know ash is not guaranteed by Duke's coal plant. The stored-to-fly ash is heavily regulated, can be toxic, and will be stored directly next to the homes if this takes place. Project Log has been obstructed from public view. Project Log will eventually belong to Day and Wilburn and they will decide who uses the site and how it will affect Person County business. The PC BIC supported the county dollars and gave away the county asset and Project Log should have, should have considered a private-public partnership to lease the land at the very least. The PCBIC is a broken entity and separation from the county must take place. No county funds should be transferred to the Person County BIC. The EDC requires revision, a review of the board members and their potential conflicts of interest. The optics of the insider gain and benefits of this project will always remain.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Andrea Childers.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening.
My name is Andrea Childers. I have been a resident of Person County for thirty-one years. I come here to ask the board to reverse their zoning decision on December fourth, twenty twenty-three. According to Person County's Unified Development Ordinance, storage of hazardous material is not permitted in any of the existing zoning permits listed. I assume whoever created this did so to protect the environment and the citizens of Person County. Therefore, to find out that the planning board is currently working to change this and puts all of Person County residents in jeopardy. If this passes, every board member's legacy turns, will be turning Person County into a hazardous waste dump. At the last commissioner meeting, this board required the owner of a one-acre salvage yard in Person County to agree to certain conditions prior to approval of the special use permit. This board required these conditions to protect the neighbors of the salvage yard. In order to protect all of Person County residents, these conditions should be required of all small businesses and mega-million-dollar fossil fuel industries alike. Therefore, before the Mariah Energy Center is built, this board is responsible to require Dominion Energy to, one, hire a third party to conduct an environmental impact study, a stormwater runoff study. All neighbors within a two-mile radius have their wells tested on a regular interval starting before construction of the Mariah Energy Center. Agreement, the construction noise should only occur between seven o'clock in the morning and seven o'clock in the afternoon. And finally, a fence tall enough to obstruct the view of these storage containers. By the way, Dominion Energy still has not answered our two hundred-plus questions.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Katie Moore of Roxborough.
Good evening, commissioners. My name is Katie Moore. I'm a resident of Roxborough. I am here tonight again to request that you all reverse your zoning decision made late last year to permit the Mariah Energy Center. I'm also asking that you all request an environmental impact study. You, as an entity, and Dominion Energy are the only two entities who will be able to call for this. Neither of y'all have. They never will. So I'm asking you to, because we need an environmental impact study. You all have clearly demonstrated in previous meetings, as well as in this meeting, that you understand the importance of protecting the environment. And I'm asking you to simply apply that same standard to Dominion Energy. As Andrea just said, we heard previously from, from this body that they had sent our questions to Dominion Energy. We have yet, again, I'm here to say that we have yet to hear the answers about those. Those questions were written by residents who live closest to the proposed facility in October. So it's now been seven months that you all and Dominion have had access to those questions that we still have not heard any answers. Meanwhile, they've started construction on the facility. For those who haven't seen those questions or heard, those questions relate to things like concern about groundwater contamination by residents who are primarily on well water, concern about trucking emissions, concern about accidents at the facility that might cause emergency conditions. My main question that I have for you all is how do you think that this facility is going to benefit Person County? Because even though I have been attending each of your meetings since December, I have yet to hear anything, anything convincing and anything positive that this facility is going to bring to the county. So I personally would like to hear you all, y'all's answer on that. I'll close by saying that it was also, comments were also made that the CARRY facility was toured and, and members of the commission felt comfortable with that. There are many things that are different about the proposed site as really, as compared to other facilities in the state. For example, all other similar facilities in the state are within one mile of a four-lane highway. As you all know, this area is nowhere close to a four-lane highway. All other facilities similar in the state use municipal ground, use municipal water supply, which is again, not the case in this very rural environment. So again, I'm asking that you call for an environmental impact statement and that you all make an attempt, concerted effort to get the answers to the questions that we've had for seven months now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker we have is Jill Hoffman of Roxborough.
Actually, I'm Rougemont. Did I, Jill Hoffman of Rougemont? Okay. All right. Good evening, everyone. I hope you all had a great Easter. We sure did. We had all the family at the house. Easter lunch, my eighty-seven-year-old mother and her husband were there. Our daughter, our son, his wife and all the grandkids were there. It was the first time my mom was able to meet our new grandchild. And it was the first time we had an Easter egg hunt at our house for the twins that are a couple of years old now. It was, it was the best family time we've had in a long time, especially with COVID and all these other things going on. We made great memories this weekend. We had hoped for this, having a house out in the country, in the woods, that we'd be able to have good family time, be able to be with nature, you know, the birds and everything. It was just fantastic. Unfortunately, I think this may be one of the last times that we'll be able to have an experience like this. I think being outside, breathing fresh air and enjoying the woods, hunting Easter eggs. You made the decision on December fourth to allow this storage facility for natural gas to be put in our backyard. Our, yeah, it, it is in our backyard. We're less than seventeen hundred feet from where this monstrosity will be. We'll be able to see the towers from our house. Those structures are going to look awful against that blue sky that we saw yesterday. We ask that you ensure the safety and the health of the citizens of Southern Person County and all of Person County, and the environment, and just the quality of life in, in Person County. First of all, you probably won't do it, but we ask you to rezone and go back to the original. If you can't change this rezoning mistake, we implore that you make sure that adequate testing and research are done before further building. Of course, Dominion and Duke Energy, you know, they're going to say it's safe. But please consider third-party advisors or experts to help you with finding out if this is really safe for our community. I know you've been asked before, but what would you do if this was in your backyard? I'll tell you, your future be as uncertain as ours at this point. And we really And we really would like for you to think about protecting all the citizens of Person County. And I hope we have another beautiful Easter like yesterday. Thank you.
Thank you.
The last speaker we have is PJ Gentry.
Good evening, commissioners. How are you?
Fantastic.
It's nice to see you representing the county in a professional manner. Appreciate that very much. I really don't know what to say after listening to all the speakers, other than, from what I can tell, the biggest issue that the board has is with transparency, openness, and honesty about the deals that you're getting the county involved in. From the MEC to a cell tower to an unauthorized, what I think is an unauthorized development of land, technically owned by the county, being given away. You spend more time deciding if you're going to make a proclamation on something or put a cell tower up than you do for a gas storage facility or a rail station that could potentially cost millions of dollars, and we're giving the land away. And when you're questioned, it's like Hunter's laptop. Nothing to see here. Nothing to see here. Don't worry about it. We got you covered. You know, the people in this county are not stupid. They're educated. They're smart. Did you think we wouldn't notice? Did you think that somebody wouldn't notice that there were flames going up at the tree line at Woodsdale? That's how this all came about. Somebody said, "What the heck's going on? There's flames over the tree line." Well, that's where this started. That's where the investigation started. Same with the MEC. You did not listen to the people's concerns. You did not give a full explanation of why you decided to do this project. You've just said, "Trust me, don't ask me any questions." It's the lack of trust and accountability. That's going to be the legacy of this board, and I think it's horrible for the county. Because it's not just people here in the room tonight or people locally watching this. There are people from all over that watch what goes on. I travel the state constantly. And I tell person, people, I'm from Person County, and I get eyes rolled. "Oh, yeah, we know about Person County." "Well, why do you, well, we've seen your commission meetings." "Why are you watching our commission meetings?" "Well, we like to see what's going on around the state. People like to know if that's a place they want to go invest or move to." So what you do here goes out farther than just here. Good news, we live in a small community. It's great. Bad news, we live in a small community, and people know what's going on. And with the advent of the internet, you're never going to put that genie back in the bottle. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, that can conclude our speaker registration.
Thank you. Item number seven on the agenda is discussion, adjustment, and approval of the consent agenda as presented. Do we have a motion for approval?
Commissioner Powell, make a motion to approve your consent agenda as presented.
Motion on the floor, any discussion? If you're in none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. New business, item number eight, Person County Business and Industrial Center PCBIC. Funding request, Philip Allen. But in Philip's absence, Mr. Vice President Scott McKinney will go forward, please.
Thank you, Commissioner Powell. Good evening, commissioners. President Philip Allen does send his regrets. He was traveling tonight and unable to attend tonight to represent Person County Business and Industrial Center Incorporated, also known as PCBIC. I am Scott McKinney, the vice president of that organization. 501(c)(3) organization that you're very familiar with, has worked closely with the Economic Development Department of Person County for decades. We do come before you tonight with a simple request based on estimates by our treasurer, Dan Craig, local CPA, who's served as treasurer for many, many years. We're coming forward to ask for an appropriation of $10,000 to cover anticipated costs through June 30, 2023. We're expecting to, we have incurred and expect to incur up to $8,000 of legal expenses related to projects by June 30. And we have requests from our Economic Development Director, Brandy Lynch, to invest $2,000 in the industrial park near the entrance. As you enter on Crown Boulevard to the left, we've got some saplings and things that are growing up into major-sized trees, and that's one of the areas that she brings visitors to on economic development prospect visits. And so she's asking us to clean up the yard there a little bit, so to speak. Of course, you have the discretion. If you decide to make that appropriation, where to pull that from? Contingency may be the best, most appropriate one. You do have the Economic Catalyst Fund as another option. We do respect your request and had, had great discussion about this at our most recent board meeting when this request was authorized. But we don't want you to, we want you to please hold harmless the Economic Development Department. Brandy and her staff have a very limited budget, and we would not want to cause them any harm. Happy to answer any questions.
In Mr. McKinney, some of your comments there, there was, you quoted some numbers. Did you have that information for the agenda packet previously?
No, I had not received the request prior to the meeting.
So nothing in writing that could have been...
I received a written request to be, to present to the board, but I did not receive the detailed amounts needed.
Not an amount nor breakdown?
Right.
What were those numbers again?
Yes, sir. It was total $10,000.
Yeah.
$8,000 for legal slash project expense. $2,000 for unusual industrial park maintenance.
Do we know this money? Will it get you through till when?
This is based on estimates that our treasurer provided at the last PCBIC board meeting. Get us through June 30. And there's a subcommittee that was appointed at the last board meeting to come forward and present through the county manager, hopefully at your next commissioner meeting, a request for the next fiscal year. That would be carefully thought out.
So that would be June or July? June, that we would, they would come back for another request?
Right. So this current request, my understanding is through June 30 and to cover legal expenses and maintenance at the industrial park. And then I have asked for them to present a detailed budget request if they do need funding for the next fiscal year to the commissioners in advance of finalizing the manager's recommended budget. So if the commissioners do want to provide direction to include that request in next year's budget, then we have the opportunity to work that in. And I will note, I do not have a recommendation necessarily tonight of where to pull the funding due to knowing that the PCBIC board had indicated they would request $10,000. I did not know what that need was specifically for. And as Mr. McKinney mentioned, there are a few different spots that could come from in the county budget, but implications of pulling funding from each of those. And in addition, we would also need to enter into a written agreement with PCBIC that spells out the expectations for the use of those funds and the requirement for them to report back to the county after the period. So having the details of the request will help me draft an agreement and also be able to come back to the board with a recommendation as far as the funding source. So you may consider, may want to consider tabling this item till the next meeting if you do want to further consider the request so we can be prepared with the documentation.
Well, I know the $2,000 we're talking about for the industrial park, I know that the tenants there, that with the land, they do pay a monthly fee for maintenance and upkeep of that park. And if, it may be something needed to look at is that if that's not covering the expenses that we may need to look at upping that with our tenants.
My understanding is that PCBIC is going to have that discussion, that that's something that their budget committee is going to look at, is the tenant fee, because that is paid directly to PCBIC, and they establish that amount.
Couple of questions, Mr. McKinney. You said that $8,000 request is projected attorney fees for this project?
I'm sorry.
The $8,000 request is for projected attorney fees?
Is for attorney's fees incurred as of the time we were having that discussion and what was anticipated to be billed through June 30. Because there are, of course, ongoing projects that we're involved in, discussions.
Comment or question on my part here? We all know what PCBIC is. Most folks do. It's gained a reputation, but it's a 501(c)(3).
Yes, sir.
Now, a question for our, hate to put him on the spot, but our substitute attorney. Are there statutes related to county government or county taxpayer money funding nonprofits?
Yes, you can.
That, that we can?
You can.
With stipulations?
Well, public funds, and with stipulations.
Yeah, okay. So that's somewhat, we, we really have not supported nonprofits previously. This one is in a little different category, I believe. It's been in existence since maybe 1991 or '92 or '93, early '90s. And funding of nonprofits puts it in a little different arena. It's a little different because it's taxpayer-funded. And so it's kind of a concern, but I appreciate your comment there.
Commissioner Powell?
Yes, sir.
I'd like to add, we do appreciate the cooperation of the county attorney in, in teaching folks at PCBIC about the latest and greatest changes in governmental law and recommendations. And, and that board is fully aware of the desire of the county manager to have a written agreement relative to this request and any other requests in the future. So we appreciate that effort on her part to educate folks and move us all in a better direction.
Oh, thank you. And Manager Kathy, I appreciate your thoughts and insight there to recommend that this be tabled. I don't know what the, what you board members feel, what you think your recommendation would be at this point. And, and in that too, you did mention future funding going into the, the next fiscal budget. So we got two things here.
My, yes, understanding is that their budget committee will be developing a request for the next fiscal year, which would likely be a separate action for approval and an agreement to go along with that that would outline how those funds would be spent in the next fiscal year.
Separate action, but a new ground for this board.
As far as the operational aspects of PCBIC, is my understanding of this.
I would, would like to answer, if I could.
Sure.
You have been joined at the hip with PCBIC in terms of the county and PCBIC for many, many years. It's been a very cooperative, fruitful relationship. The last big item that was done by PCBIC was the purchase of a property that's very vital to the eventual exercise we hope of the option related to the mega sites. That's just one example of where funds have gone in recent months and in the last year, substantial funds. Also, significant amount of development work on the mega site has been paid for out of PCBIC, primarily drawn from clawback funds that preceding boards allowed to PCBIC to manage on your behalf, so.
Yep. That was, I understand, well, you understand that, most folks don't.
Yes, sir.
But during that span of time, using those clawback funds funded PCBIC and its efforts, its builds and all those sort of things. So that money has expired.
And, and in part, I would say that our request to you tonight is, is a direct response to your budget planning retreat you had where a report was given on the finances of PCBIC as requested by Commissioner Sims, and the clear message was given, "Come back and ask for what you need."
Thanks, sir.
So we've asked.
Comments, questions, motion?
Just, Catherine, just say, if we grant the $10,000, that is not locking us into anything down the road as far as funding.
Right. That could be considered as a separate action for next year.
We do have a suggestion from your county manager to be considered, I think, as well. Remind me what that was?
Tabled it.
Tabled it.
Got a follow-up? I will say that I am in support of funding. If we want to find a way to where that money, have a written agreement. I understand that. And have a recommendation for the county manager to provide where that money will be coming from, if that, if you feel more comfortable with that. I'm fine with tabling this issue with the intent that this is brought up at our next meeting with a full recommendation from the county manager.
So that's your, your motion?
If everyone's in agreement with that.
I am. I think it's appropriate.
Okay.
I'm a person of help.
So, Mr. Chairman, motion to table the, this item until the, the next meeting with a pending recommendation from the county manager of what we're written agreement.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor. Any other discussion? If you're in none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, none, motion carried. Item number nine on the agenda is presentation on fiscal year 2025, 2029 Recommended Capital Improvement Plan with CIP manager Kathy and Finance Officer, soon to be retired Amy Warrenburg. Big smiling face.
Tonight, I'm pleased to present Person County's Fiscal Year 25-29 Recommended Capital Improvement Plan. And glad to have Amy here. We'll both be available to answer questions after I give you the overview of the document. You do have a hard copy in front of you. The electronic version was included in your agenda packet that was posted online last week. This document is an important planning tool for our county. It reflects the Board of Commissioners' priorities for large capital projects that cost $50,000 or more per project. That is the established criteria for inclusion in the CIP. So in addition to Person County Government, this plan also incorporates the needs of our partner agencies, including Person County Schools and Piedmont Community College. We also include capital needs for the Person County Museum of History and the Person County Senior Center as both of those organizations occupy county-owned facilities. So as you are well aware, there are many competing demands and priorities for county funds. In this plan, we have worked hard to create a balanced plan with needs and priorities considered within our logistical and financial constraints. The projects in this plan span the next five years, but the fiscal impacts will extend far beyond that. Many of the projects are financed with debt service payments that are typically spread over 15 to 20 years. The Board of Commissioners reviews the CIP every year. The five-year plan projects out the needs and the plan for the future, but you'll only vote to fund year one of the project. So you vote to approve the funding on a year-by-year basis. So on page four of the document, you will find the criteria for recommending projects within the CIP. Pages five through seven list recently completed projects within the past year, as well as many... Pages five through seven list recently completed projects within the past year as well as many ongoing projects that we continue to work diligently to accomplish. Pages eight through thirteen provide a list of recommended projects that are included for the next five fiscal years. You will see the explanation or the project description for those projects in blue text and those are organized by year. Following those five pages of recommended projects, you will see a page, um, page fourteen with green font and these are the projects that are not a part of the CIP. You will note here that it does not mean these are not important projects for the county, for our partners and the public. But due to the significant cost of these projects, they do not fit into the five-year plan due to limited funding options available at this time and other priorities. So, the actual CIP funding schedule begins on page fifteen. Request for fiscal year twenty-five totaled over thirty-four million dollars and requests over the five-year plan are more than a hundred and sixty-three million dollars. The recommended funding amount is twenty-eight point seven million dollars. Next year's funding sources are diversified. The general fund contributes just over two point three million dollars. This is actually lower than our target level of three point eight million. But in order to alleviate some of the pressure on the general fund, we are recommending using eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars of the ARP funding that has been set aside in the general fund to fund ADA accessibility projects at the Kirby and at Huck Sandsbury Park. The CIP fund balance contributes two point six million dollars to the plan and this is essentially a reallocation of the two point one million dollars for the PI merger in this year's plan and the five hundred thousand dollars for the south elementary roof that were budgeted this year. We have included those in the debt financing, so that frees up the funding that was allocated for this year to go towards other projects such as renovations to the human services building and local contingency. As part of this plan, Piedmont Community College will contribute one million eight hundred thirty-five thousand dollars towards the purchase of the Carolina Pride Car Wash Building for CHAT, the Center for Health, Advanced Technology and Trades. In fiscal year twenty-five, the county plans to issue twenty-one million dollars in limited obligation bonds to finance the county's portion of the Carolina Pride Car Wash Building purchase, the Human Services Building purchase, the PI Recycling Center merger and the south elementary roof replacement. This financing will not require an increase in property taxes. Beginning on page twenty-two, you'll see information for the county's current outstanding debt and future debt service levels. The total outstanding balance for debt service is twenty-four million dollars. The county's debt to assets ratio and debt service ratio are both low. The proposed fiscal year twenty-five debt service of twenty-one million dollars as well as planned debt issuances in fiscal year twenty-three and fiscal year twenty-eight for Person County Schools projects is fully supported in the county's debt model. This is due to the transfer from the general fund of the one point two million dollars per year that we've been directing towards the lease payment at the Human Services Building, the paydown of current debt and excess revenues that we've been able to transfer into the capital improvement plan. We made a pretty large transfer after the last year's audit was completed in the last fiscal year. Excess fund balance over twenty-five percent. So, the approval of the CIP is scheduled at your next meeting on April the fifteenth. Both Amy and I are here, as I stated earlier, to answer any questions that you may have as you review this particular plan. You are encouraged to also take it with you and digest it and contact us with any questions you may have in advance of the next meeting, too.
Thank you.
Very good report, there's a lot covered there, especially if you're looking from fiscal year twenty-five to twenty-nine. That's, who knows about tomorrow, really don't know. A couple of things, I looked over this and, I mean, the need is there for all of these, I have no question about that. And I am not any kind of expert related to, uh, nine one one consoles and radios. So, I don't know if Mr. Fushy could answer this question or some, some of the others, I want us here from EMS.
I could give you a brief description of that request.
I've read the request, I don't have a problem with the request, I see the change. My question there, uh, how current are those radios? Are they the encrypted type that's coming?
So, are you referring to the radio system replacement nine one one consoles?
On page ten, yeah.
So, that, uh, those consoles are end of life here, very shortly at the end of this.
Those are, but I'm talking about what you want to purchase.
Oh, the ones that we would be purchasing. Well, they, they, I cannot speak to the specifics of those, but they would meet all of the established standards. We also anticipate that we will get funding through the nine one one board, um, through our E nine one one fund to go towards this particular project. So, we have not included it in the next fiscal year. There may very well be a need to budget board in the next fiscal year, but we are waiting to find out what the revenue, um, source will look like for that project.
Well, in the technical terms, there's something, but I do remember the word encryption, that's coming. And some have already started that process. And only just a question, so I'm not throwing water on the fire here.
Okay.
You're looking at one point three five million? I would, I would almost, from my perspective and taxpayer's perspective, like to see some sort of, uh, plan to replace X number radios or X, these, I guess they're all, there's more than one console, I guess. Maybe replace one this year, another the next year in succession, and I don't, don't know, um, so.
My understanding of it is that replacing everything together will, uh, get us past the, the end of life problem that we have as far as support, um, where the equipment goes and will promote everything.
So, they were all purchased at one time, so they all die at the same time.
Like, and we can get.
I think part of the problem, as I recall the conversation I had with the emergency services director about that is that you can't, that they're not compatible, those newer radios are not compatible with the older radios, so you can't, they don't talk to each other.
It might be the encryption part.
It could be, uh, so I think that's why that he's requesting all of them to be replaced at the same time so that they would be programmed and work together.
Okay.
And I can get some additional information on that particular project and share it with the board following the meeting.
And one other thing, um, I don't know how many of you are familiar with the, the old, it was the old bus garage and that is the school maintenance building on the corner of Windhaven and Leesburg Road. That was constructed in nineteen forty, I believe, or forty-one, so do the math, look at those, look at that building. Crowded, uh, rotten, infected, all the insects and everything goes with the building that old. Commissioner Palmer and I went over one day and looked at the dilapidated system that they have to work in. It's, it's two-pronged, there's an external building where, uh, when there's equipment put on the surplus list, the school system has to keep that equipment or items, whatever they are, uh, housed until they are listed for sale. And then they can dispose of those. So, there, that's a requirement, that's a mandate. And that, part of that building is in total disrepair, collapsing, falling apart. It's an accident waiting to happen. Is that accident, accident gonna happen when someone from the school system is in it? Who knows? None of us know about tomorrow, but it's a, it's a horrifically bad situation there for, uh, for the school employees to work in. The other thing is that property is, is prime property on the corner of Windhaven and Leesburg. So, if we construct that new building as requested, I believe it's far back as two thousand and five and we do have a site, it is prepped, ready to build on, I think it's been that many years, so maybe it might take some, some additional grading at this point, but, uh, it's, it's not all new. So, again, that's prime property on that corner and, uh, and once cleared, then it could be, uh, appraised and, and put on the real estate market for sale and I'd like to, I'd like to see that done. So, I guess the first step in that would be to include, uh, that maintenance building in this CIP plan.
I would like to get a written request from the school system. But we have a form that details the requested project, so it would be helpful to have that in writing. And my understanding is they did not submit it this year because they didn't feel like it would be considered, but we haven't had it to consider, um, over the last few years.
What I had heard, comments, uh, from previous boards, but, uh, years go by, as I said, it's, it's, um, it's an eighty-year-old building and it has not been maintained all that well either. Things have changed, they're operating something different out of there now than they did once when it was a school bus garage. So, the, it was converted for that purpose, the building wasn't uphitted or converted. So, I can get that from the superintendent and have that as we move on before the next meeting, not a problem, really easy. Okay.
Chairman Powell?
That's my thing, yes, sir.
Director Clayton, could he make this request or does it have to go to the superintendent?
No, sir, I'm making the request. I'm making the request to be included.
I'm talking about for the remodel or rebuild.
What she needs.
Right.
Yes, yes, yes.
Chris can make that request in his budget?
I think Dr. Peterson.
Peterson has been wanting to do that, okay.
I believe, is that right?
We received a request generally through Dr. Peterson for the CIP.
Any other board member comments? Any other questions there?
So, you had shared with me and you have a general idea of how much this new facility may cost?
Estimated three point one, three point one million, yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, I guess it would be helpful to get a little bit of feedback from the board as far as the priority.
Fully review this and before we make any.
Sure, that's what I'm asking.
Yeah.
Um, well, we'll have to go back and kind of relook and redo things. So, if you do look at it and have some feedback that you'd like to provide to me in the interim as we look at that over the next week, we can take that number and we can look at the current, um, lineup of projects and the funding sources and identify possibilities for working that in at a certain point in time. I'm not sure if the request will come for next year or year two, have to see how the school system puts that together and how that fits in with their planning horizon. But I am hearing that the board is receptive to looking at how we might be able to fit that in to the five-year plan.
I'll get you something from Dr. Peterson.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, if, uh, that concludes the regular meeting as far as Chairman's report. Just a couple of things I think of interest. Mr. McKinney, Dr. McKinney was there, but I had the pleasure of attending a four-year EDC PCBIC meeting recently. Maybe we're gonna have to set some time limits on that one as we did this one. But anyway, lots of discussion about what's going on economically in Person County. Also, there was a ribbon cutting for a new service, uh, through the NC Department of Health and Human Services in Roxboro, which is, uh, in the entrance way to Hall's Way, uh, service for, um, mental health, physical health, um, substance abuse. All those things are rolled in, uh, to their services there. So, uh, another avenue of service to, uh, our citizens who may, uh, be in the need of services along these same lines. Also, we had, um, uh, Research Triangle Park Director Ryan Combs to come up and we met with him last week. He and I have been talking, uh, several months about, uh, his coming and sharing some thoughts with, um, with us about what's going on in Person County and, um, and we had quite a good discussion about, um, how Person County is being promoted in the, uh, Research Triangle Park, uh, group and that's twelve counties, I believe, we added one, I think there's twelve. There's always one in, one out, but, uh, it was a pleasure to have him here and to share his thoughts, uh, from a little different, um, perspective and giving some, some of his concerns for us to consider and strategies, uh, going forward in Person County. So, it was, it was good. And also, I, I attended part of, I wasn't able to stay the entire meeting, but, uh, the Tourism Development Authority, where they had a summit, I believe they called it a summit, and, uh, that was very good. We had, uh, guest speakers from outside that came and, and, uh, did a tremendous presentation. And, um, so, again, lots of facts and figures about what's happening, um, in, in Person County. Manager Kathy, comments?
Um, we do need to schedule an orientation for you all as the Consolidated Human Services Board. You will assume those responsibilities on April fifteenth, which is the date of your next meeting. So, the two proposed options for that board orientation are Tuesday, April sixteenth or, or Wednesday, April seventeenth. Um, we would like to schedule the orientation session from nine to eleven AM with the, uh, CCR consultants who will be working with us, um, on the consolidation, with the, uh, plan to have a light breakfast served at eight thirty so that commissioners can be there, um, in the FEMA room and staff may also come in to meet you all. This would be open to the public, so it would be noticed as a special meeting. But I did want to gauge the board's availability for those two dates so we can work with the consultants to set that date and reserve the room and make other arrangements, um, for the orientation.
Sixteenth is good for me, go ahead.
Go ahead, what was that date?
I was saying, he said sixteen.
I responded with the sixteenth as well.
Sixteenth is good for me.
Okay, Charlie, you said the sixteenth worked. How does that work for you?
At the time being, it does.
Okay.
Was that eight thirty?
So, um, we would have a light breakfast available at eight thirty when employees are arriving to work and they can stop by for a meet and greet and then, um, the orientation session would be from nine to eleven in the FEMA room in the Human Services Building.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Sims?
Appreciate everyone that's, uh, came out to express your concerns within the county and, um, certainly, uh, understand the sensitivity, especially with the, um, um, no mech that is there and, and their sign that says no harm to our farms. I certainly, uh, as a county commissioner, uh, am not out and I don't think any of us here are out to do any harm to the farms. And, um, but again, appreciate you coming out, sharing your concerns and, um, that's it, that's all I got.
Mr. Palmer?
Well, got an email, we all but Derek got it, Saturday night about an animal, a dog biting a bicyclist that rides Person County roads. Very lengthy email from me, uh, it started Saturday night, went into yesterday, continued today, this afternoon. So, I'd like to share what this non-resident, but she loves to ride the roads here in Person County, the rolling hills of Person County and the beauty of the scenery across the county. Okay, uh, February the twenty-eighth, she was riding her bicycle. No. February the twentieth, yeah. She was riding a bicycle and she got bit by a dog. The dog was quarantined for. The dog was quarantined for ten full days. Laugh out loud. I've had the same thing happen to me. I think one struck me out. Dog was not vaccinated, was quarantined for ten days. This happened on Berry Pierce Road. Dog chased and cornered this lady after stopping. And she was using her bicycle as a block to keep the dogs, two dogs, off of her. Incident number two. Nedmore Road, March fourteenth. Cornered by two more dogs. And she didn't get bit that time, but she had to get off her bicycle and block the dogs and scream and holler until the landowner came and retrieved the dogs. Incident number three, Clay Long Road, same old, same old. Incident four, happened Saturday, the thirtieth, this past Saturday. On Clay Long Road. Two German Shepherds chased the victim, tried to jump on her as she was riding along Clay Long Road. You all have heard me gripe, complain, moan, almost cry for the dealings that I have to do when I walk my dog up this street here. It is an absolute shame that people do not take responsibility for their animals. Going forward, I think I think that we need to make a stricter ordinance with a higher fine for these vicious dogs. And they are vicious. They're chasing me, they're chasing bicyclists, anything they can get a hold of. I don't know how many occurrences I've had on this street right here alone. I cannot imagine the feeling this lady had. She told me through email that she probably would never return to Person County, which is a shame. I think there needs to be a better correspondence between Animal Control as well as the law enforcement offices that respond, whether they be city or county. And here I am tooting the horn again on dog safety. I guess that's my permanent job the rest of my life. Those that know me know that I don't play with dogs. I'm not friendly with dogs because they're not friendly with me. And I would love, at least while I'm on this board, that we look deeply into this and change the ordinances, increase the fines, make the people responsible that have these delinquent, non-cared-for dogs. And that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Commissioner Perry?
No report.
Commissioner Thomas?
No report.
All right, so at this time, we need a motion to go into closed session. Number one, per General Statute one forty-three, three eighteen, eleven, eight, three, for consultation with County Attorney. And the following permitted to attend, County Manager Kathy, Clerk Solomon, and as I said, Attorney Herbert. Have a motion.
Motion to go to closed session.
Motion to go into closed session, end the discussion. Here are none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed. Motion carried. Aye opposed, uh, motion carried. Do we?